I'd like to call the meeting in order. Mrs. Burns, roll call, please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Sporni?
Here.
And Mrs. Walbiser?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board had an executive session before tonight's meeting to discuss matters related to confidential employment matters and confidential labor matters. Additionally, the Board had a retreat on Saturday, January 13th, 2024, at the administrative offices here at Maple Point in this room, which is permitted pursuant to the Sunshine Act. Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Mrs. Burns, anyone sign off for public comment?
There was no sign.
Thank you. That being said, we have two candidates who are applying for the open position from Region One, which is vacated when Mrs. Bowman stepped down. And I think what we'll do now is we'll each have each of the candidates come up and speak for approximately three minutes from the podium. And then, I guess we'll, after you speak, we'll ask questions. If anyone has any questions, then the other person will go. And then, we'll move on with what we have to do as far as motions. So, Ms. Brosius? Hit the red button.
Good evening. I stand up here with great pride at the chance I may have the opportunity to sit on the Nishamani School Board and be a contributor and voice of the community for the school district that helped shape me into who I am today and the district that my husband and I have entrusted to educate our own children. Born and raised in Langhorne, I am a proud member of the class of 2001, following in the footsteps of my mom, class of 63, and my siblings, 85, 88, and 89. Currently, my two children attend school in the district, Josh, fourth grader finishing up at Tuwanka, and Courtney thriving in seventh grade at Pequesting. From a young age, I was inspired by those who taught me, hoping to one day return to Nishamani as a teacher. As life often happens, I ended up on a different track, but one that always connected me to education. I spent the early part of my career as an administrative assistant at a small-distance learning school, moving on to be the Director of Admissions at John W. Halli and Catholic Girls High School, and then shifting to a Student Services Coordinator position at Temple University. More recently, I served as a project manager for the School District of Philadelphia, supporting three deputy chiefs in their initiatives. The areas of focus that I supported included efforts related to school climate, trauma, mental health attendance, student leadership, homelessness, and the maintenance and review of policies and procedures connected to these areas. This role gave me a wide range of experience on the inner workings of a school district. While at the district, I was also provided the opportunity to serve on two committees, one that was focused on building schools of the future, and the second that was an external committee dedicated to helping with the opioid crisis in Kensington, where I had the opportunity to work alongside the city's managing directors and key city services to work to improve the Kensington corridor. After leaving the School District of Philadelphia, I had a short five-month term as a project manager at the Bucks County IU, assisting the Operations and IT Department. While at the IU, I was approached to apply for the role that I'm currently in, which is the Director of High School Internships for CLA, the eighth-largest accounting and professional services firm in the country. In this role, I have been chosen to lead and execute a one-of-a-kind high school internship that is held in several locations across the country. This program I lead has gained national attention, fostered a partnership with FBLA, and is continuing to build relationships with other business-related organizations. I am charged with making sure that this internship is impactful while also creating innovative ways to increase collaboration, engagement, and opportunities across our firm with local schools and their surrounding communities, all in hopes of increasing the pipeline into the accounting field. With all that said, I feel like I'm at a point in my life and career where I can take my experience, my love of education, and give back to my community by serving as a member of the School Board. I truly feel that my background lends itself to allowing me to make informed contributions and decisions that would continue the positive impact this district has on the next generation and community it serves. It would be an honor to return to Nishamani in this capacity and exciting to be a part of the district as it continues to evolve. Thank you for your time and consideration, and thank you to my family and friends for being here and supporting me this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Okay. All right then. Mr. Smoji?
There it is. Not enough room for my binder. I'm gonna start by saying good evening, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be up here this evening. Want to discuss my interest in why I want to apply for the position of School Board Director. My name, as Mr. Sullivan said, is Steve Sumoji. First, a little bit about myself. My wife and I moved to Lower Southampton Township about 22 and a half years ago. We've raised two wonderful boys, Andrew and Michael. Our youngest, Michael, graduated this past fall, I'm sorry, this past spring, from Nishamani High School, and he graduated with honor, something we're incredibly proud of. As for me, I retired this past September, after nearly 33 years of state service with the New Jersey judiciary. My last eight years were as the Assistant Director of the Municipal Court Services Division, which is a major division within the administrative office of the courts. In that capacity, at the direction of the Chief Justice and the Administrative Director, my responsibility was simple, to administer and oversee and support the 500 municipal courts in the state. If you're unfamiliar with New Jersey's court system, the Jersey municipal courts are pretty much synonymous with the Pennsylvania District Courts. New Jersey's municipal court is a pretty immense operation. There are more than 500 municipal courts, about 325 judges, and about 3,000 staff. Collectively, those 500 courts manage and handle about 6 million cases each year, and collect and distribute over $400 million. As Assistant Director, as noted, my charge was simple, to make the municipal court system the best in the country, to use the tools at my disposal, to make the courts as efficient as possible as just as possible, and to do everything I can to lead them to be the best that they can be. As noted in my resume and cover letter, some of my direct responsibilities included: developing and implementing new court policies and procedures, reviewing and drafting proposed legislation, testifying at State Senate and Assembly Committee hearings on proposed legislation, meeting with legislators and with legislative staff on the language in bills, to make sure that they really work for the citizens of New Jersey; work with other court leaders, law enforcement, local leaders such as mayors and business administrators and other partners on issues impacting court operations; developing and drafting new rules of court; developing, overseeing, and administering statewide training programs for the 325 judges, for the 500 court administrators, and nearly 3,000 staff members; partnering with our IT experts to leverage technology to allow the municipal courts to complete its mission of doing the best service possible for the citizens of New Jersey. While I don't have significant or really much experience at all in school operations, I am really confident that these skill sets are incredibly applicable and transferable to the position here at hand this evening. Much of my adult life has been public service. As noted, I've had 33 years working with the New Jersey court system, and my primary focus has been simple, to make life easier and better for others. A key question, and perhaps the key question here tonight, at least for me, is why am I applying? There's probably no one simple answer, and the answer is probably varied. But the primary and most prominent reason is I love public service. There's no better calling than to help others and to support others. And what better place to do it than in my local community? Working for the New Jersey courts, I was precluded, unfortunately, from doing more public service. New Jersey has likely the most strict code of conduct for its judiciary in the country, so I was precluded from doing anything that touched on anything political and anything in an elected position. But now that I'm retired, I have the opportunity, and I really want to step up, and I want to serve. Additionally, though trite and much overused, there's no debate the kids are our future. Helping them succeed early academically and socially is paramount. Helping them now helps them succeed later in life. And helping them succeed helps families succeed. If the kids do well, the families do well, or at least better. And families that do better is better for the community, and I want to continue that service. The Nishamani School Districts have a long tradition of excellence, and I would like to do my part to continue that excellence. Thank you for your consideration and an opportunity to say a few words here tonight. And whatever decision you make, I know that the children in this district are in great hands. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions for that candidate? Okay. I believe the floor is now open for nominations.
I'd like to make a nomination for Erin Brosius.
I have a nomination for Erin Brosius. I got a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Any comments? Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Sumoji.
Can we get a second?
One second.
You second?
Beth. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to close nominations.
Need a second?
Yeah, second. Zach or Miss Hollenbeck? We don't do this usually, so. Okay. So, I'd like to open the floor for any discussion amongst the board members.
I don't necessarily have a discussion, just a comment. I think it's wonderful that two people have come out to look for this position. For those of us that are new to the Board and been on the Board for a while, it is an honor to do this, and it is great for the children, for everybody to be involved, and whoever we pick, because I do believe that both people are qualified. I hope you find other ways to stay active in the community, because we, as a community, sorely need it. We don't have enough volunteers to volunteer for all of the things that are out there. So whoever is picked for here, I hope the other person finds other avenues to still stay engaged, because we, the community, desperately need you both.
I'd like to tag on what Miss Hollenbeck said, and wanted to thank you both for coming out. About a year ago, I was in your shoes, standing on that podium, so I know what it feels like. I did get the pleasure to speak to both of you, and I wanted to thank you for your time. Serving this community has been rewarding. Being able to provide to the district and making sure our students in our region have what they need to succeed has been our priority. I believe we have the best teachers and administrative staff to support that as well. So either person that comes on and that is elected tonight, we welcome you, and we do hope for the other person that you will continue serving in some way. Thank you.
I also would like to thank you both for applying, and I will say this is probably the most attended board meeting in the last four or five months, so you brought a following with you too, which is good to see.
I just, I'm looking at this, I've got a tough decision in front of me, but as others have said, please, whichever way the vote goes, please stay engaged, and that goes for others out there. We can't do this without public participation, honestly. That's all. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to call the vote to close the nominations. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We've closed nominations again. So at this point, you have two candidates, Erin and Steve. Take them as they were nominated for the vote.
I have to roll call vote?
It's a roll call vote, yes. All right, so we have two candidates who are nominated, Erin and Steve, and at this point, we'll go to a roll call vote.
For Erin first, or do we pick?
For Erin.
Mrs. Burns, roll call?
Mr. Allen?
No.
Mrs. Bowman?
I'm over here.
Oh, sorry.
That's who we're filling.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
This is for Erin?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Sporni?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Walbiser?
Yes.
Six yes, two no.
She's appointed. Congratulations, you're appointed. Now I have to read something formal. This is Board Business 2.01. Board of the Nishamani School Board, School Directors Vacancy, Region One. Whereas the Nishamani Board of School Directors approved and accepted the resignation of Cindy Bowman at the January 9th, 2024 Public Work Session, and whereas Section 315 of the School Code provides the remaining members of the School Board, appoint a qualified person to fill the vacancy within 30 days of when the vacancy occurred, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors hereby approves Erin Brosius to fill the remaining, to fill the balance remaining of the Region One vacancy through December 2025. I got a second. Second by Mrs. Lafferty. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. And now, the Honorable District Judge Charles D. Jonas will administer the oath of office. Swear her hand and whatever sign.
All right. Raise your right hand, please.
You're on the wrong side, then.
Repeat after me. I, Erin Brosius.
I, Erin Brosius.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. All right, now this comes to the closing of the meeting. Do we have any other board business? Any public comment? Board comment? Oh. Please state your name, where you reside, and your occupation.
My name is Judy Cantorso. I've resided in the Nishamani School District for over 40 years. I am an IA for the district for many years. I came tonight because there have been three postings that part-time became full-time. Many of us IAs don't understand how this is. We are happy that you guys are finally doing full-time again. I can't even tell you how happy we are about that. But that's, our only concern is, is it going to keep going, or is it stopping here? And why weren't the postings posted? Because according to the contract in 951, it says it must be posted, either new or already existing positions.
That will be possibly addressed at the next meeting. If not, you can come talk to us after the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
We have to close this meeting and start another meeting in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any board comment for this first meeting?
I just want to reiterate, welcome Erin. Stephen, I hope you stay involved. Know your son very well. It was a really tough, tough decision, and I hope you stay involved.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Can I get a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Meeting's adjourned, and in 10 seconds, we're going to start the next meeting. I'd like to open the next meeting. Mrs. Burns, roll call?
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Sporni?
Here.
Mrs. Walbiser?
Here.
And Mrs. Brosius?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand as one nation under God and in this world, with the routine of justice for all.
Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Mr. Brown, Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. This week, our high school ramped up their performance of the musical Spamalot, the cast of nearly 90 students and six crew members staged five performances from Thursday through Sunday, with over 2,500 audience members came out to see them. Congratulations all for a great show. I had the opportunity to see it on Sunday, and the arts are absolutely amazing here in Nishamani, and we have some extremely talented students. So again, congratulations. Couple of Saturdays ago, over 200 Maple Point students spent their mornings assembling 2,120 blessing bags for Angels in Motion, a Philadelphia-based group that helps people suffering from addiction. This is an annual MLK Day of Service project here at Maple Point, and all of the food items were donated by the Maple Point community. It is truly a really cool thing to see the kids assemble 2,000 bags that later get distributed to people in need. Another MLK Day of Service project had the Pequesting Middle School community gathering pet-related donations for the Women's Animal Shelter in Ben Salem to help not only the shelter animals, but also families struggling with food insecurity to provide for their pets. And finally, a couple sports-related news items from the high school. Our girls' basketball team has captured the Suburban One League Division crown for the second year in a row. Senior Reese Amitis broke the all-time Nishamani scoring record for the Lady Skins during the senior night game on Friday. Last Tuesday, she also scored 35 points in a game, which is also a Nishamani record, and her accomplishment is all that more impressive when you consider she missed playing half of her freshman year due to COVID. Senior Lola Imbarando reached her 1,000-point milestone during a game on Tuesday. It's very unusual that you have two players reach 1,000 points on the same team in the same year. Congratulations to Reese, to Lola, and to Coach Gallagher, who also just notched his 100th win as a coach of the Lady Skins. And congratulations to the entire team as they head into playoffs. And finally, both the boys and girls varsity bowling teams had a great day at the Bristol Township Tournament this past weekend, each taking home first-place trophies. Congratulations to them for a great performance and for making Nishamani proud. So that's all I have, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Burns, any public comment?
No standing ovations.
All right, we have some action items tonight. I'd like to make a master motion to approve Item 2.01, Administrative Retirements and Resignations; 2.02, Administrative Appointments; 2.03, Certificated Retirements/Resignations; 2.05, Certified Leisure of Absence; 2.06, Certified Revised Leisure of Absence; and 2.07, Support Retirements and Resignations; 2.08, Support Appointments; 2.09, Leisure of Absence; 2.10, Support Revised Leisure of Absence; 2.11, Settlement Agreement; 2.12, Student Settlement Agreements. And I also would like to note that under one of the retirements, we have Brett Walvestein retiring with 30.5 years of service to the district. There's a motion on the, master motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions. Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Lafferty?
I'd like to make a motion, 2.13, Second Reading of Policy, whereas the first reading of the policies listed below was completed at the January 23rd Public Board Meeting, and whereas the board policies listed below are being recommended for a policy second reading and final adoption into the Nishamani School District Policy Manual. Now therefore be it resolved that Nishamani School Board of Directors hereby approves the policies listed below for final adoption into the Nishamani School District Policy Manual. We are tabling a particular section, number 006, for meetings. We are tabling this for now.
To a future meeting.
For a future meeting.
A motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Second by Mrs. Walbiser. Any comments, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Items for approval at the public board meeting. 3.01, Routine Business Matters; 3.02, Burkheimer Confidentiality Resolution; 3.03, Overnight Trips; 3.04, Sunday Facility Usage; 3.05, BCIU Number 22, 2024-2025 Program and Services and Instructional Materials and Research Services Budget. and Research Services Budget, 3.06, Student School Year Calendar, 3.07, to reaffirm the COVID-19 Health and Safety Plan. These will all be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Mrs. Hollenbeck? That brings you to Committee Reports, Business Operations. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
There's really nothing to report right now on business operations. Once we get the budget working and everything, we will have that next meeting.
Thank you. Educational Development, Mr. Rodriguez?
Nothing to report right now. The last meeting was scheduled. We had it postponed due to weather, so their next meeting will be scheduled for March 12th, 2024, 6:30 in this room.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, Facilities and Planning?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The Facility and Planning Committee met Thursday, January 11th, 2024, in this room, 6:30. At the time, we got an update on the high school fieldhouse redesign. The committee deliberated over some prefab construction ideas that were brought to our attention. We got an update on the construction of Court Creek Elementary. Our belief is that it is on track for opening January 2025. That's our target date. It seems that we are on track to do that. Got an update on the Proquesting addition, which is ongoing. The Field Project Punch List, our facility director took us through a couple of items that they checked off as they took a walk around. We got a resolution of some electrical issues we had in the lighting posts due to rain flooding getting into the outlets. That has been resolved. And we also were brought up to date on some ideas on the Maple Point Nurses Bathroom. We're investigating the installation of a lift to accommodate students with special needs. It will be in compliance with the ADA Act. The next meeting for that committee will be February 15th, coming up at 6:30 in this room. Please attend. That's where we talk about things, and you can have a back-and-forth with the committee, and we can, that's the best public interaction and the best way to get things done around here. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Policy Committee, Mrs. Lafferty?
Nothing new to report. You know, I just read 2.13, so the Policy Committee meetings are actually really effective and interesting, so I encourage everybody to come out. But our next meeting will be March 20th at 6:30 here, and we'll continue our policy readings. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative reports. IU Board, Mrs. Walbeiser?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Who's doing the Nishamani Education? Mr. Sporni?
Yes. The Board of the Nishamani Education Foundation met here at Maple Point yesterday evening. Among the items discussed was the upcoming Harlem Wizards game on Saturday, March 16th. Tickets are now on sale at www.nishamani.org/wizards. Sponsorships are still available, and information about that can also be found on the website. The next NEF Board meeting will be held on Monday, March 11th, at 4:00 p.m. here in the district office at Maple Point. Members of the community are invited to attend and participate.
Thank you. PSBA Liaison, Mrs. Marshall?
No report at this time.
Thank you. Tech School, Mr. Allen?
Again, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The Bucks County Technical High School Joint Board Committee met Monday, January 22nd. Mr. Sporni and I attended as your representatives. As always, I'd like to start with the Student of the Month, and we have one of our Skills for Life students, Akira Blackman from Nishamani, has been outstanding in the past month. I extend congratulations to students Evan Bauer of Nishamani and Gary Corkle, sorry, of Nishamani, and Zoe McElvin from Bristol Borough. They competed in a diesel technology competition at Penn College of Technology in December. Their team came in second place. Evan was the overall competition winner. Each student received tools and was offered scholarship money to attend that college, which is great news. Brings me to Board Business. Unfortunately, well, we got, I'm sorry, we got an update on our building projects. The ongoing issue with some control issues, and there were some, with our monsoon-like weather we had for a couple days there, there were some leaks in the roof, but they had been addressed. Because of the ongoing building updates, unfortunately, we've had to suspend the summer Explorer program. We hope to bring that back the following year, but there's just no way to accommodate the students and get the work we need done at the same time. With that said, I can say that our SWEAR program, Summer Opportunities Are Real, is on track. That's our special needs group, and I am pleased to say we're going to be able to hold that this summer. With that, I promised this board a couple numbers of our students. At the moment, we have 326 total students in the tech school from Nishamani. Seven of those are in our Skills for Life program. We have, let me see, sorry, we have 336 coming in of that ninth grade, the ninth grade, that's coming up year, sorry. We have had 95 seats allotted freshman year. That has gone to 82. That's because we still have 336 children, and that means that our upperclassmen, we lose those seats by attrition usually, and we make it up with the freshman class. That means we're retaining those students, and that's just fantastic. Wish we had more seats for the freshmen coming in, but as I said, all around, it's good news. With that, we had 138 applicants in this lottery for those 82 seats, which is also, again, I would love to see each and every one of those who wanted to go. It's just the limitations of the room over there and our agreement. But knowing so many of our Nishamani students, you know, are willing and want to go, I'll keep that in mind when we come up with our next agreement discussion. And that is all I have, other than our next meeting is, give me a minute here, it's on the back page, February 26, 2024. Thank you, that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I do just want to clarify, not that it's good that there's leaks at the tech school, but the leaks at the roof you were referring to weren't at our properties in Nishamani. Okay, thank you, thank you, okay. That brings us to the closing of the meeting. This is second public comment period. Anyone wish to come to the podium? Please state your name, your occupation, and where you reside.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ellen Pulak. I live in the Twin Oaks section of Levittown, and I'm a Nishamani employee. I'm beginning my, I'm in my 25th year here at Nishamani. It's my second career, 24 years as an instructional assistant, and I absolutely love what I do. I'm very happy to see that you hired a few more full-time employee instructional assistants. I am full-time. When I started, there were two full-time assistants in the general population of each building, and at least, in the building I'm at, there was two. I'm in, I work at Albert Switzer Elementary School, and there were, was a full-time in each of the special needs classrooms. As of right now, I am the only full-time employee at Albert Switzer. As of tomorrow, there'll be two more, but they have to be in special needs classrooms. I'm in the general ed population, and I have duties in the morning and the afternoon that when I leave, who's going to do them? There, I was out sick yesterday. It's a day four for the elementary schools, and I have duty in the morning and the afternoon. In the afternoon, there are only two of us that take care of, on day four, there are only two of us that take care of the dismissal for our buses, and half of our students ride buses. I wasn't there. I knew that it was a problem, so I, even though I was sick, I emailed the secretary and let her know, you know, there's only going to be one. Then I looked at the attendance sheet, and the other, the teacher was off that afternoon. There was nobody. I knew who I would have pulled, and so I suggested that, and that's what they did. But you have, the district and the board has eliminated a lot of full-time positions for aides, and I saw at the last board meeting that you hired two brand-new people to be bus drivers and to be full-timers. There are a lot of people that have been with the district a very long time as instructional aides, and they're not full-time. And we don't get to keep the full-time, the people that we used to keep because they're not full-time. There's nothing to hold them to us. I know we've lost, in my building, I can think of two very good instructional assistants that left for full-time positions elsewhere, and they haven't been replaced. You know, I don't know what you can do, but you need to do something to take care of the children. You can spend money on new buildings and on nice athletic areas and all, which is wonderful, but the education of the children is so important, and since COVID, it's really been difficult, and they really have a lot of issues. And those of us who are instructional assistants are working with them every day, and I love what I do, but we need help. And I think if you would just have a few more, not a few more, lots more full-timers, you would see a big difference in the education of our children. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone have any future topics? Brings us to Board Comment. We have some future meetings coming up. The next meeting will be a facilities meeting here in this room on February 15th, and then there's a board meeting in this room on February 20th. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second? Second by Mrs. Hollenbeck. All in favor? Okay, motion's passed as nine to zero. Have a good night.